Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Jeffries.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zanfardino.
The minutes from the meeting that was held on May 7th, 2018 were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? See, none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Tagged.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence to see?
Yes, I have a couple of things. Prior to the meeting tonight, you held a public hearing for the group called Firefly Nights for their, their function permit, liquor permit, and that requires a vote, the city council, if you're going to approve that.
Very good. So as Kay mentioned, we did have a public hearing prior to this meeting to review this request. Even though we have two members of council that weren't able to attend that meeting, I know that they have been forwarded the relevant facts of this matter, so I'm comfortable calling for a vote. So at this point, I would just, we'll just have a simple voice?
We need a motion to approve.
We need a motion to approve, okay. Is there a motion to approve the appeal?
Mr. Chair, I motion, I make a motion to approve the appeal.
Second that.
Very good. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the appeal is approved. Thank you all very much. Further correspondence, Kay?
Yes, also, received from Finance Director Brian Bouchon is a listing of some additional budget transfers to be made for the month of May, and those need your approval.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the budget transfers are approved as presented.
And also distributed to you on Friday with your council packet was a memo requesting some appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions by the mayor, and I will just read those names for the record, and then we can approve them as a slate of names.
Thank you.
So new appointments, Community Reinvestment Housing Council, Council's Maggie Fawcett, Human Relations Commission, David Anderson, Human Relations, Kim Sockman, and Ellie Boyle, Park and Recreation Board, Jody Anderson, Tree Commission, Marilyn Schrude, and these following are going to be reappointments. Those were new appointments. Reappointments Bicycle Safety, Eileen Baker, Carica Buck, Reagan Ottley, Bob Rex, Bee G Housing Agency, Tom Knox, Shannon Fisher, Karen Seelberg, Civil Service, Andy Newlove, Community Reinvestment Housing, Rob Holly, Sue Clark, Mike Marsh, Dick Newlove, Human Relations, Morgan Hollinsworth, Akiko Jones, Income Tax, Galen Finn, Parks and Recreation, Cale Hofer, Planning, Mark Hollenbach, Public Utilities, Mike Frost, Records Commission, Barbara Ford, Traffic Commission, Daniel Dieter, Nicholas Hoggra, and Roger Mazzarella, Transportation Advisory, Brad Biller, Tom Kelly, Casey Mailer, Melanie Stretchberry, and Zoning Appeals, Rose Hess, and Bob Wallow.
Thank you, Kay. Is there a motion to approve those board and commission appointments and reappointments?
Second?
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank everyone for volunteering and serving. We've all been to various boards and commission meetings to know that it's a lot of responsibility and quite a bit of work, and we're lope. And so I just appreciate that we're willing to do that and do such a good job.
Well said. Thank you, Bill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the board and commission appointments and reappointments are approved as presented.
That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Kay. Mr. Mayor, do we have any special presentations to see?
We do indeed.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. Tonight is our annual presentation of the Bicycle Spokesperson of the Year Award, and I'm going to ask to come to the microphone here for the special presentation, Dr. Steve Langendorf, Chair of, or how many times have you been Chair now? The Bicycle Safety Commission.
Once.
But he, he pedals what he preaches. Does that sound all right?
It sounds all right.
Okay. When you preach what you pedal?
Yeah, I guess, same difference.
At any event, you do a terrific job.
Thank you.
And we had a wonderful event there last, last week there, Ride of Silence.
Right, and the third grade exhibit that you also had.
Yes, absolutely. So, been working hard, and thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Steve, the microphone.
All right, thank you. Before we acknowledge our 2018 Bike Spokesperson Award, we have a small token of our appreciation for council members, that the, you're unique because the only other persons who have received these are the Bowling Green third graders. Last Tuesday, the Right Direction BMX Group did an assembly demonstration at the community center, at which the mayor was able to attend. About almost 250 third graders were there to watch. The BMX Group does all sorts of tricks. Should you like to see what it, what it was, there's actually YouTube, and if you Google "Right Direction Exhibition," it will actually pop up on YouTube, and you can watch a three-minute synopsis of some fairly incredible bicycling. The nice thing that this group does is that it reinforces using helmets and, and safety. It also will probably inspire most of our third graders to try out the Bike Park at City Park this year. They were just out of their gourd. And as the mayor said, the Ride of Silence was a big hit. We had just shy of 100 participants, and this is the second year that Bowling Green's done it. We shared it with 16 other rides around the state of Ohio, and it's, it's an international event. And it's, it's quite, because it's done completely in silence and two abreast for about seven and a half miles, it's quite an inspiration. We would like to acknowledge our Fire and Police Department for their assistance. They covered every single corner and street exchange throughout the whole route. They led, led it with a police car, followed it with one of the fire trucks, and so everybody was very, very safe, so we appreciate that, wanted to acknowledge that. I also will put in one quick plug, if you, if you are a fan of the Northwest Ohio Journal. We have, we actually did a taping this morning. It will air at 8:00 on this Thursday, talking about these very same events, as well as some other bicycling discussion that, that we held. Jason Cisco and Amanda Gambi and I were able to present that, and we think it'll, it'll help inspire more rideability around town. Speaking of rideability, what we would like to acknowledge is our 2018 Bike Spokesperson, pun intended, and this particular individual, to steal maybe the mayor's term, is someone who in fact pedals what she preaches, preaches what she pedals. This is a person who rides virtually every day to and from work. She was one of the first individuals who participated in our Yay Bikes training back about a year and a half ago, and has, as, as her nominee said, literally completely changed her approach to bicycling. She follows the use of hand signals, wears a helmet. I can verify that I came in at the same time, and she in fact bicycled to this meeting, wearing her helmet, using hand signals, and is, is basically a, an absolute role model. We are just thrilled, the Bicycle Safety Commission members, to acknowledge Jennifer Cartjes, our 2018 Bike Spokesperson of the. As is traditional, we have a rotating plaque with Jennifer's picture on it, and so this will stay up here for the year, and her name is acknowledged. It's out, right out in the, in the lobby. You can admire it afterwards. And we also have a, Jennifer doesn't get to keep this, sorry about that.
Since you can't take that, you have a certificate.
But since you can't take that, we have a certificate as the spokesperson of the year for 2018. Congratulations.
Well, thank you for this. I would just like to say Bowling Green's a great place to bike in. Everything's so close together, and the motor is so pretty friendly, so. And I'm just really happy and excited about all the things the city's planning, so, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Congratulations, Jennifer. Well deserved. Lobby visitation. At this point, we welcome those who have signed up prior to the meeting to address council to do so. We're going to ask when Kay calls your name, that you approach the lectern, the microphone, and clearly state your name and address for the row.
Mary Hinkleman.
Great.
Hello, everyone. Mary Hinkleman, I'm the Managing Director for Downtown Bowling Green, and I have so much to talk about right now, but after the enthusiasm of our ladies for Firefly Nights, you can kind of tell the momentum that our downtown is going in. It started, I think, with the down, the Chocolate Crawls and the success of that, that people started pulling together. This past Art Walk in April was the best attended Art Walk, and we've got so many compliments. And again, after that, the restaurants and the merchants were all saying, wow, people are coming in and they haven't been here before. We're drawing from a different crowd. You know, numbers from the Chocolate Crawls, about half of the people that bought tickets weren't from Bowling Green, and we could track that from the ticket sales online, because it was saying where they were from. The same thing with Art Walk with the One Bike, half of the tickets were sold to people from outside Bowling Green that came in to see what we have to offer. I think people are catching on with what we have going on down here. The momentum's still going. Last week was our first Farmer's Market, and that's really what I'm here to talk about right now. Every Wednesday night from now until October 10, we have Farmer's Market at the corner of Clough and Main Street. We kicked it off last year. I have a new Farmer's Market manager, her name is Samantha Bean. She has done an amazing job at bringing vendors back that were here with us previously, and a lot of new vendors, merchants, farmers, whatever, to come down. I can't tell you how excited they were at the results last week. We had over 300 people in attendance come through our Farmer's Market last week, 25 vendors. It was exceptional, and when they're coming up and saying, this is the biggest opening day of the market that we've ever had, we know something special's happening in our downtown. And I want to thank you all for working on the food truck thing. I know some of it, we didn't see eye to eye, but I know you're working for us, so I appreciate that, and let's just keep the momentum going, and thank you all again. And come to the Farmer's Market Wednesday, because it's not going to rain.
Thank you, Mary.
That's all we have.
Very good. Thank you very much. Moving on, our agenda to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffries.
I have a few items from the Finance Committee. I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018. An ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into contract with premier national staffing or temporary staffing services. I have a resolution transferring previously appropriated funds. And from the Committee of the Whole, I have two ordinances related to the charter. An ordinance providing for the submission of an amendment to Article 9, Section 9.02 of the Municipal Charter of the City of Bowling Green concerning amendment to charter. I have an ordinance providing for the submission of an amendment to Article 7, Section 7.01 of the Municipal Charter of the City of Bowling Green concerning the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, I have a couple of ordinances from the Public Utilities. An ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for Lime Slush Disposal Services for the water treatment plant. I have an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to purchase software upgrades from Aclara for the Twax Automated Meter Reading System. And then from the Committee of the Whole, two ordinances also related to the work of the Charter Review Commission. An ordinance providing for the submission of an amendment to Article 2, Section 2.03 of the Municipal Charter of the City of Bowling Green concerning vacancies. And also, an ordinance providing for the submission of an amendment to Article 6, Section 6.09 of the Municipal Charter of the City of Bowling Green concerning Department of Planning. That is the last to the introduction of new legislation, so we move to our official reports. Mayor Edwards.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and members of council, and all assembled. Just a couple of quick items here. First, I just want to thank you very much for your quick prompt action on the Fireflies Nights. It was great fun on this, this last weekend. It was, I'm not surprised that the number was 200. I couldn't take quite a head count there, but there were lots of folks. Everyone had a smile despite the weather, and we, we do have a couple of minor concerns that maybe the, the chief might, and Lori might address, but they're all things that can be worked out. There were some, a couple of little safety concerns along the way, and, but I think this is the first time, and we covered the, all the routes by and large there, and it was dark in some areas, and some people didn't have their, their bright colors on, and they were wearing black, and it was hard to see them, and, you know, and so forth. So you'll hear more about this, but I think they're all things that can be worked through, and, and the interest of everyone, especially in the safety front there, and not detracting at all from the overall enthusiasm of the, of the evening event, because it was a lot of happy faces there. I just want to say, just a quick reminder too, about, of course, the Memorial Day Parade will be starting at the, yeah, serving U.P. marching. Okay, that's it. That was a very strong affirmative.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. But that's, let's hope for good weather and dedication, and we can always, I know it count on Oak Grove Cemetery, looking, despite the weather and all the way grass has been growing like crazy lately, but we know that it will be in tip-top shape out there. It always makes people very, very proud, the way the city maintains that very historic cemetery. We lost one of our, our workers in, in the division of, a very valued employee in our Public Works Department over the weekend, Dwayne Smoyer, who's been an employee of the city since 2000, and, and so are, he's 49 years of age, and I remember the day when we were told that he became ill, and just around the holiday time, and just a little bit before Christmas, and it was just so, so sad, and, and I know you joined with me in expressing our sympathies to his, his family and his, his young children. Also, I just want to mention, I don't probably need to remind you at all, of a very, very special event coming up on June 1, Friday, June 1, at 4:00. I hope all of you can attend and participate in it. It, and it'd be the dedication of the gazebo on the Wester Green. It'll be a day of real celebration, and maybe some of us will faint in disbelief that this we're actually, but so many of you have had a keen interest in it, and of course, our president has, has really helped a great deal in the actual construction of the gazebo. And with a little bit of break in the winter, it'll be painted this week, a very light tan, and the forms, I think, went to end today for some of the sidewalk area around, and again, we hope that the weather will cooperate so they can pour that cement there, but it should be a real time of celebration. So with that, that concludes my brief report here. If you have any questions to make, anymore than happy to try to answer them.
Other questions for Mayor Edwards? Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Municipal Administrator, Ms. Treter.
Evening again. As you may recall, there were several items in both the 2017 and the 2018 budgets that were related to changes in the city's emergency dispatching system, and I'd now like to invite Chief Hetrick forward to share an update about some of the changes that we've experienced in that very important division of the city. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Good evening. I wanted to take the opportunity to report the completion of our three-phase Public Safety Dispatch project. Last Sunday, we went operational with our new facility. It was just about a 30-foot move into another room, but for us, it was a big move. This began about three years ago, when former Chiefs Anderson and I began discussing the possibility of blending the police and fire dispatch into one Public Safety Dispatch Center. And we presented the proposal, and it was approved, and we started moving forward with Phase 1, which is our new records system, and our computer-aided dispatch system. It's a county-wide regional system that we now belong to, so we have situational awareness, not only within the city, with EGSU, they're on it as well, Wood County Sheriff's Office, as well as other entities in Wood County. So regionalization is a big thing in the public safety sector right now, and we were happy to, to get on board. It saved us a lot of money with our records management system, and allows us now to access records from other agencies that help us in, in solving crime and getting ahead of trends and things. So that was Phase 1. Phase 2, we began dispatching for the Bowling Green Fire Division. They had their own dispatch center, and they had a firefighter that was not on a truck, not helping fight fires, but running radio communications. It was a duplication of effort that frankly, we decided was no longer supportable, so we moved the fire dispatch to the police division, and, and we've been doing that now for about a year, and it's worked out very well, as Chief Mormon can probably attest, that he's got that guy back on a truck now, helping fight fires and, and running EMS services for the city instead of sitting there running a radio. And Phase 3 was the move to a new facility. We expanded our dispatch center from three consoles, or from three consoles, to 911 consoles, to three 911 consoles, and an added console for someone who might need to come in and use our facility. We have mutual aid agreements with the Sheriff's Office and the University Police, in the event that their system would go down in their facilities. They can come and sit in Bowling Green's dispatch center and run their complete dispatch from our building. So again, another interoperable piece that we were very happy to, to have, and they reciprocate with us in the event that we would have that situation. So I want to take this time to thank the Public Works Director, Brian Craft, Brian O'Connell from Utilities. We did all this work, all the facility work, completely in-house. We had only one contractor that had to come in and assist us in the technical aspects of things, so we were able to save a lot of money by doing this all ourselves within the city of Bowling Green, utilizing our own people. So the, the cost for the facility upgrade, really, it wasn't free, but it was a lot less than if we were to contract it out. So I'm happy to say that without their help, you know, we may not have been able to get this done in the price range that we had set, and it was, it was a $60,000 project as it was, and if we were to have to have external people come in to help us with this, it would have cost probably double that. So I'm happy to report that it's, it's finished now, and I would like to invite council, if they have an opportunity to come up, take a look at our new dispatch facility. I think you'd be impressed with, with what we've done, and we're looking to the future, and some of the upgrades we've made will, will hold us over for quite a long time, so I'm very happy to say, thank God it's finished, because it was a lot of work. All right. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Chief Hetrick?
Okay, thank you.
Chief, thanks so much for all the hard work and for initiating those improvements, and also happy to hear about the, the regional cooperation with the different entities. It just seems to make a lot of sense. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Chief Hetrick. I really appreciate that. At our 6:00 meeting regarding food truck and mobile food vendor permits, you may have noticed that somebody who's been a frequent visitor at all of your meetings, Joe, was not there. That's because I sent you over to the Public Library to represent the city at a meeting Columbia Gas held at 6:00, where they were talking about construction in our downtown. Joe has reported back to me, and also, for your information, Columbia Gas has been meeting with city staff, planning a large infrastructure project like that. Of course, in our right of way requires our cooperation, but that work will be starting the first week in June, and it will continue throughout the summer. As you may recall, the city then has a significant downtown project planned, so as soon as that wraps up, you may be seeing water and sewer lines going in then after the gas lines. So we will, of course, keep you updated for what the, the construction schedule is for fall and beyond, but this summer, it is Columbia Gas. They have been in contact with residents. We will work with them cooperatively to make sure they have the proper maintenance of traffic setup and other safety requirements, of course, and we have encouraged them to, of course, be mindful of our, our large traffic flow downtown, as well as special events that are happening in downtown. At the April 16 meeting, Councilmember Robinette outlined 10 priorities represented, representing all of you from the Community Action Plan. At the time, it was noted that implementation timelines were varied, but I wanted to provide to you tonight a brief update on a few of the items. Now, don't worry, I'm not going to go through all 10 this evening, except to note that there are several items that are still being fleshed out, that we will report to you on in the future. For your information, after the list was shared by council, impacted department and division heads met together to discuss implementation, study, and coordination approaches. Because there are such a variety of items, some were assigned for further consideration and recommendation, some referred for boards and commissions, and a few are actually ready for action. We thank council for its patience as we work together through these various community issues while still tending to the day-to-day business of the city. The first two items on your list, related to the city's zoning code and other related land use matters. Much of this work will be ongoing or evolving over the next several months. For example, one of the items that we've discussed with Planning Director is additional training for the Zoning Board Appeals Members. Looking at areas specifically identified in the CAP, staff suggests moving forward on buffering strategies, particularly among commercial areas on major corridors. Recommendations would first be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and we would then ask for them to make a recommendation to city council. The other item recommended for priority action in the zoning code is review of the city's parking regulations. We propose gathering a small working committee to review these recommendations, along with appropriate staff from planning, engineering, and sustainability, and engineering and sustainability are due to stormwater regulations that are heavily related to parking. We'd ask for a member of the council and the Planning Commission to each appoint a representative to work with us, and we look to begin this work over the summer. The other item recommended for priority action in the zoning code is review of the city's parking regulations. We propose gathering a small working committee to review these recommendations, along with appropriate staff from planning, engineering, and sustainability. And engineering and sustainability are due to stormwater regulations that are heavily related to parking. We'd ask for a member of the council and the Planning Commission to each appoint a representative to work with us. And we look to begin this work over the summer. The next item, and this one is ready to roll forward, is the micro grant program. And I am pleased to announce its launch tonight. The micro grant program, just to rehear what our criteria is, is established in an effort to encourage the advancements of the Community Action Plan and allocates funding for micro grants ranging from $500 to $5,000 annually. Each applicant must meet the following conditions. Advance the principles ideals of the CAP, be well-planned, demonstrate that funds will be effectively and efficiently used, and where possible, show collaboration to work well with others to reduce costs, and explain how the recipient of the grant will impact the project, receipt of the grant will impact the project. So our plan is that each year in the budget, funding of the micro grant program is something that would be considered by you. And once that amount is established, at the beginning of the year, we would open up funding for, we would open up applications due by January 15. That way, those planning events within the next calendar year would have the opportunity to know whether or not they've received funding. If, though, you've allocated more than is actually budgeted, the next step would be that we would open a second round if money still remained for June 15. So it's our suggestion, in the effort of getting something moving forward, that you go ahead and open up, or that we open up, the micro grant program for this year, and that we set applications out tomorrow with a deadline of June 15, and allow someone to, allow people in the community to apply. Couple notes I want to make for you. One, this is not to compete, replace, or change anything with the community foundation grants. They have a fantastic grant program that has impacted this community tremendously. This is really for events and activities related to the Community Action Plan. So if you think of Court Street Connects as the example, that was something that was done during the CAP. This is, you know, the kind of events that we're thinking of. Now, there are probably things we haven't even thought of yet. And we encourage, you know, our residents to think of items that bring together community coordination, cohesiveness, togetherness, understanding, cooperation, and all of those great things. Our CAP plan is online, so if people want to review it and even point out potential sections of the CAP plan that would be applicable, we would encourage that as well. To have people accountable back for the grant, what we've asked is if they are awarded funding through the micro grant program, that they would come before council after the event and explain to you what the impacts were. We were recently encouraged, we were encouraged recently by the joint meeting of the Transportation and Safety Committee and the Bicycle Safety Commission. With safe transportation for all those using our roads and important priorities, our efforts to educate and encourage safe travel are continuing. As the city looks at long-term projects, for example, those submitted for future funding, infrastructure reviews are certainly being considered. Part of the recommendation from you is to work on a draft plan to implement CAP strategies relating to bicycling, grants, and bicycle infrastructure. Our first step is to work with the Bicycle Safety Commission on the development of the recommendation, and then staff recommends, as a second step, to look at a comprehensive plan for Court Street to be considered. The last one that I'll touch on this evening refers to the CAP priority about Carter Park. We've asked the Parks and Recreation Director to identify and align the items in the Parks Master Plan, that was passed within the last couple of years, I think, with those of the Community Action Plan, and see where commonalities align and identify differences that may need further vetting. The Parks and Recreation Foundation may be a future strategic partner in this effort, but until details are determined of formal connections, not quite ready for prime time yet, but just one of our partners that we identified in our work. So in conclusion, it's our plan to provide periodic updates like this to you, and it's likely too that you will see future legislation, recommendations, and actions over the next several months. And of course, as we talk about the budget in the fall, we expect some things will be in there as well. So that completes my report, subject to your questions.
Questions for Ms. Treter.
I don't have a question, but I shouldn't be amazed because of the work you've done in the past, but this is quick. You've put a lot of time into it.
We have a great team, Bill. They're wonderful people. They're amazing. See, what do they say about a good leader? Surrounds herself with wonderful people. Yes, so kudos go to them.
Well done.
You're proposing a June 15 cutoff for the micro grants. Are you suggesting there's money in some line item in the budget this year?
Yes, money was allocated this year for CAP implementation. And so we're recommending that you just do 5,000 this year and consider events. So these would probably need to be events that are pretty well in the formation phase or ready to go. So we thought, you know, let's, we just didn't want to throw a different date out there since we're going to do the January 15th and June 15th. But we also, I think we're all anxious to see some things start to move forward here in the city. And since council did allocate some funding for CAP priorities, we didn't want to put it all towards this because we think there could be other expenses with the things we're considering, but we thought that worthy of moving forward.
Great, Laurie, thank you.
Thanks.
Quick question, Laurie.
Sure.
Just to make sure I understand the process with the charter. We have this legislation introduced tonight, and there's no other formal public discussion other than whatever we choose to discuss here. Is that correct?
We had discussed having a committee of the whole meeting prior to the evening that we would give these ordinances their third reading, which I think, Kay, would that be?
It's June 18, I believe.
Yeah, I think.
Yes. So we have recommended you'd like to hear feedback at that meeting, that that may be a good way to proceed.
Yeah, that's what we have discussed, was let's go ahead and get these on the legislative agenda. And then as we approach the third reading, let's have this committee of the whole meeting to come and discuss the merits of all of the different proposals in a public meeting.
Do we have availability on June 18?
We have a public hearing scheduled at 6:45, so we have availability beforehand.
Let's put it on the calendar, and we'll discuss the timing prior to that to determine maybe how much time we might need for that meeting to discuss by February 6.
And if there's any changes that come out of that, I'd need a few minutes to make those adjustments for the legislation.
Great. Yes, thank you.
You would also have another meeting in between, because as long as you pass it via July 2 meeting, that's when you would really need it passed to go to, to be at the Board of Elections on time for its August deadline. So you do have a little bit of cushion that you've built in for yourselves. Actually, that's kudos to the Charter Review Committee, who got its work done so quickly.
Very good. The chair, co-chairs of that committee are here this evening, so again, thanks for your hard work.
All right, thanks.
Laurie, thank you so much for that update, and certainly appreciate all the hard work. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Good evening. It's hard to believe it's already the end of May, but I wanted to make sure you knew that a group of us will be attending the International Town Gown Association, their annual conference in Columbus at Ohio State University next week. Laurie and I will be going, along with some BGSU officials. I also want to let you know, we will be doing two presentations. Here is a quick abstract to learn about those if you're interested. But basically, it's about sustainable partnerships, and the other one is about Court Street Connects, and how that was a great example of tactical urbanism and all the different partnerships involved to pull that off on a very shoestring budget, or should I say no budget that we pulled that off? We think it was very successful. As you recall, it did win an award. So we want to share in the good news of Bowling Green and really continue to share all the great examples of partnerships. And certainly, we hope to bring back some great opportunities or ideas that we hear after attending. We're also busy preparing for the Ohio Town and Gown Summit, which is July 19 and 20. And we received 14 proposals from sessions across Ohio. Really excited. We had a great diverse, really, as far as communities go, as far as institutions. We're excited to really unveil that program at some point, maybe within the next month. There will be activities the evening of July 18, if you want to clear your calendar. And just really welcome the folks that we have. We're hoping to have at least 200 to 250 people in Bowling Green. And we really think it'll be exciting to really network with others that have similar positions, elected officials, planners, all kinds of people we hope to attract from Ohio. We also are working with Oxford and Miami University to pick the next two host sites for the Ohio Town and Gown. So we're excited about that, too. We have a lot of great applicants for that. And also, not so exciting, but it is for the quality of life in our neighborhoods, is grass and noxious weeds. I would just encourage that if you are in your neighborhood, drive-by property, please call us and let us know that you think grass is close to eight inches or so, so we can really act on that. You know, we have a smaller department, so it's just really important that we all work together and just don't make an assumption that the neighbors have called or the city already is aware of that. So I just would appreciate that and encourage you to do so. And that's it, unless you have questions.
Other questions for Heather? Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ollie.
Well, it's a really slow time in Parks and Rec right now, so I have no idea. I'm kidding, of course. So yes, this Saturday, believe it or not, and I'm not going to guarantee good weather. Mary did that. You just jinxed yourself. I'm sorry. But Sandy, the last council, you were really good about guaranteeing good weather. So Sandy might be able to, okay? But this Saturday, and in fact, I'm going to go the opposite direction and say, almost always, the opening day of the pool is really crummy and cold and rainy. Okay, so, yeah, it usually is. The whole weekend is just really bad, usually. So I'm hoping I'll jinx myself, and it'll be fantastic. But yes, the pool opens this Saturday, believe it or not. So if you have not gotten your pool pass, please beat the rush and come on in and get that. So our staff is working fast and furiously to get that ready, doing a fantastic job. We have all kinds of summer staff on being trained, so your guards to protect you. So it's a really exciting time of year. I love this time of year. It's a little insane, but I love it. The one thing that my chair for Bike Safety Commission, who does a fantastic job, neglected to mention, last week was just super intense for bike safety. I think you were still recovering from the right direction, jumping over children and things. I know I am, but it was fantastic. Friday was Bike to Work and School Day. And we don't, we don't really have a way to get a count for that because we don't have forced people to tell us. But I do know some people checked out some of the specials. We had two local businesses that rewarded people for doing that, Grounds for Thought and BGB Work. So, and I know a few people who checked that out, unfortunately. I couldn't. But, and our middle school and high school representatives are working hard, and they actually had announcements made on Thursday at both places. I don't know if kids actually listen to announcements, but to promote that. So I just wanted to share that with you, so with this being Bike Month, so there's a lot going on. Summer programs are about ready to kick off. Registration has been underway for a while. Things are, summer are proving popular, and parents, yes, your children will be done with school on Wednesday. So come see us if you haven't thought about summer, because it's coming. Kind of like a cold jump in the swimming pool. It's coming. But we have a lot of our events kicking off, and the mayor mentioned that there was an exciting event on Friday, June 1, which the one he mentioned is very exciting, but I can't believe he didn't mention the one occurring ahead of that with a celebrity server that looks an awful lot like you, because it is you. Our very first Lunch in the Park kicks off on Friday, June 1. Mayor Edwards will be celebrity serving, South Side 6 with Tim Teggy. And the whole list of Lunches in the Park is here. We have some new restaurants this year. We had some that were unable to come back. So we had a few that were waiting and a few that we just kind of reached out to, and they said, absolutely, we'd love to do it. So make sure that's actually going to be every Friday in June and July because of the way the 4th of July falls. So we've got an extra lunch in there. And I won't guarantee good weather at all of those either, but hopefully, we'll have good weather. And coming up before we next meet, Friday, June 8, and I believe it's the third annual, but Art in the Park, fantastic partnership with the Arts Council, and of course, Bowling Green Parks and Recreation, BGSU, and some other folks. But at Simpson Garden Park, reminding you once again, one of the main reasons that we won the best hometown. And I didn't say that. The judge just said that, so. But it's in full bloom. It looks fantastic. Come on out. This is a great, great event. We sometimes have problems with having too many people there for the parking lot, so please bike. Or you can park at the hospital lot and cut through the garden park to see all the different things going on. All different kinds of arts, music, painting in the air. I'm going to torture what that's actually called, because I'm not an artist, but there's a term for that. And Horizon Youth Theater will be out there, all kinds of different things. Some of our kids' camp creations will be on display, so check that out. And last but not least, concerts in the park. I'll get to that schedule. Those do not start until June 10, and there are six of those throughout the summer as well, on the Neal Hall stage. And I won't promise good weather for all of those either, but they will go on rain or shine because we are able to move those inside. So there's all kinds of other things going on as well. We're going to have to cover all that. So I thought I'd hit highlights. You know, check out our website, our Facebook page, and Twitter handle, and all that. So that's all I have, unless you have questions to make.
Questions for Kristen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh.
No, Kristen copied everything I was going to say.
Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
Lloyd Portman, unless you have questions.
Questions for Brian. Thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraat.
Good evening. At the time of year, construction season, Manville has some work going on, road repairs and concrete, AD ramps, that sort of thing. So Manville will have construction the entire length from Worcester to Napoleon Road. And that's right down the road from where the university is working on a tunnel project on Thurston, just part of the fire department, which will be closed through July 2, that location. We are doing our brush collection as we speak this week. And try and get through it, hopefully, at this week, and if not, it'll be after the holiday. About 310 locations, people called in, and we're trying to pick those up as efficient as we can. And same time, as Mayor alluded, we're getting ready the cemetery for the Oak Grove services on Monday. Hope the weather's good for that. And our engineering department's been working a lot with, Laurie alluded to, the Columbia Gas project. That's kind of precursor to the project we're going to have in the fall, doing the sewer and the wire lines in the downtown, which is ahead of the road project, the fall and spring and summer. So busy time for Public Works. And once we get done with our brush collection, we're going to start doing our 50/50 sidewalk projects. And hopefully, by the end of the summer, it's practically done on our streets, getting ready for another, hopefully, mild winter. So Grant Jones, our city arborist, came tonight. He wants to give you some information on what he's been doing with our trees, our tree planting, and probably remind people how we're successful, got some awards at the Tree City USA again this year. So I'll turn it over to Grant Jones, our city arborist. Thank you. Unless you have any questions to make.
I do have a quick question, just real quick. Status of Coneyo.
Coneyo, they got the pump station, it's going to be like a little house over the actual pump station itself. They've got that going on. There still is the deep gravity sewer to do down towards Mike's house. And that section where the street has not been paved, that's fairly significant because of the depth of the sewer and bedrock in the area. So still some time there this summer of disruption, getting that sewer done. But once it's done, we'll get the other pump station out of service, and then fire this one up and get the rest of Coneyo paved and get it put back together, so.
That's the ultimate question we're getting. Some of us are being asked is whether or not we're still on track to get Coneyo paved permanently before the end of the season.
That's our intent, yes.
Great.
So far, weather's been okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. I was going to talk a little bit about some of the work we've been doing with Cities Trees, and I kind of broke it into three areas. I was going to start off with the Public Works side of things. Got a really good tree crew over at Public Works. We also have a lot of other good folks that help us out on some of our bigger projects, but they've been doing a lot of kind of our routine tree work around town, our pruning, our removal of high-risk trees. We've got some stumps that we've been grinding as well, so they do a great job on that. We had North Branch do our tree planting this spring, and we planted 82 trees. And I anticipate that we're going to plant about that same number this fall. So we'll be doing some more in November. And then the utility side of things, I've got a contractor that does our line clearance work. And kind of our priority area this year is Ward 1. And since Ward 1's a small geographic area, once that's complete, we're going to go out and start to work in some, along some of the rural electric lines. And this is also the last year for our current line clearance contracts. So I've been working with Brian O'Connell and with John Stewart to kind of start the process of getting that ready to go out for bid. So hopefully, in another month or two, you'll be hearing some more as that process plays out. Our tree commission has been active. We do three tree care seminars each year. We did our first seminar back in April, and we have two more planned for September and October coming up this fall on just basic tree care activities that homeowners can do for their trees in their backyard, answer some of the questions they commonly have. And our tree commission also, this is their first year, their photo con- And Brian mentioned some of the awards that we got back in April. In Upper Sandusky was the Tree City USA Awards. Bowling Green got their Tree City USA Award for the 37th year. But I think the bigger achievement is our Growth Award. Bowling Green's got the Growth Award for the 24th time, which is more than any other community in Ohio. So that's a lot of support from the community and from city staff and administration and city council for a number of years. So thank you for that. And the way the Growth Award works is you have to earn so many points within a calendar year to get the award for next year. And so the big project that I'm working on to help us earn points, to put us over the top for that count for next year, is creating an Urban Forest Storm Response Plan. So it's kind of a guidebook for any type of storm response, but it's kind of tailored towards catastrophic storms. So if you think of a really severe straight-line wind, something where there's a lot of tree damage, it kind of is a process for how to go about dealing for that, as well as documenting what some of that debris cleanup looks like. So if it's a big enough event where there's FEMA funds that become available, it's kind of documenting the cleanup process, so hopefully, the city can recoup some of the costs from that cleanup. That's a little bit of what we've been doing with Cities Trees, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Questions for Grant.
Thanks.
Thank you, Grant, for all the hard work. We appreciate it. Okay, that concludes our official reports. If we have any council committee reports to say things. Okay, if we move forward with the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3702 for first reading. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. James.
I move we suspend the rules and give resolution 3702 its second and third reading.
Second.
It's moved in second to K. Would you please call a roll.
Horton.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yep.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for resolution 3702.
Resolution number 3702 for second and third reading. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President, I would just point out that these are for some overtime payments and some just small amounts of money, basically. So at that, I move that we adopt resolution 3702.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Okay, would you please call a roll.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3702 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8684 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018 and ending December 31, 2018.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we suspend the rules and give ordinance 8684 its second and third reading.
Second.
It's moved in second to K. Would you please call a roll.
Jeffers.
Yep.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3702 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8684 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018 and ending December 31, 2018.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8684.
Second.
It's been moved in second to K. Would you please call a roll.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 8684.
Ordinance number 8684 for second and third reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018 and ending December 31, 2018.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8684.
Second.
It's been moved in second to K. Would you please call a roll.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8684 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8685 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing municipal administrator to enter into a contract with premier national staffing for temporary staffing services. Ordinance number 8686 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing utilities director to advertise for bid and entry to contractual contracts for lime sludge disposal services for the water treatment plant. Ordinance number 8687 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to purchase software upgrades from Aclara for the twax automated meter reading system. Ordinance number 8688 for first reading. Ordinance providing for the submission of an amendment to Article 2, Section 2.03 of the Municipal Charter of the City of Bowling Green concerning vacancies. Ordinance number 8689 for first reading. Ordinance providing for the submission of an amendment to Article 6, Section 6.09 of the Municipal Charter of the City of Bowling Green concerning Department of Planning. Ordinance number 8690 for first reading. Ordinance providing for the submission of an amendment to Article 7, Section 7.01 of the Municipal Charter of the City of Bowling Green concerning Civil Service Commission. Ordinance number 8691 for first reading. Ordinance providing for the submission of an amendment to Article 9, Section 9.02 of the Municipal Charter of the City of Bowling Green concerning amendment to charter.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I have a question. Mike, on this particular wording, I've got a math background and not a legal background, and I'm having a little difficulty with the phrase, "At least every 10 years, a charter review committee consisting of residents of the city of Bowling Green shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by council." And to me, at least every 10 years would be 10 years or more. And so, looking at it from a mathematical standpoint, it looks to me like it's saying you shouldn't have it any sooner than that, but at least every 10 years. So you could have a review in 12 years, or 14 years, or 10. But I've had some discussion, and it might be that legally, at least means no more than. And so I'm kind of...
I would say that's what that means, but it's actually a change. I screwed it up last week, and the way I originally wrote it, I said, "Not less than every 10 years," which would have done exactly what you mentioned in the form of it. But no, I think what this says is it can't go longer than 10 years. It could be three years, or two years, or eight years, but it can't be more than 10. That's what that says. But you know what? We can have it say whatever you want.
My problem is, of course, the charter commission wants it to be no more than every 10 years, and...
They want it to be at least, at least 10 years.
But at least 10 means 10 or more.
No, not my understanding, yes. I can bear with this.
Okay. Let me ask you this, all right, and then I'll let it go. If I say that I'm going to bring at least a dozen donuts to the next council meeting, which I'm not saying, and I bring two dozen, haven't I fulfilled my bringing at least a dozen? In which case, 24 is more than 12.
Bill, I think that we could discuss this for quite a long time, and I think that...
Well, I know I could.
I think that yours is the minority opinion as to concern about the wording of this ordinance. So based on the fact that we have the assurance of our city attorney that the language reflects the opinions expressed to him by the Charter Review Commission, I would suggest that we leave the wording as it is.
Bill, bring up donuts. There's going to be at least one council member that's going to be a little disappointed.
So if I say I'm going to bring at least a dozen, and I bring just one for you, it'll be okay.
He said at least one. There might be two.
Well, at least at least two. Okay.
Great. Thank you. K, would you please proceed?
Legislation for second reading. Resolution number 3701 for second reading. Resolution authorizing municipal administrator to execute the Ohio Department of Transportation's final resolution to participate in the ODOT project converting two stop-controlled intersections to roundabouts at I-75 lying within the city of Bowling Green.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we give resolution 3701 its third reading.
Is there a second? It's moved in second to K. Would you please call a roll.
Roland.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for resolution 3701.
Resolution number 3701 for third reading. Resolution authorizing municipal administrator to execute the Ohio Department of Transportation's final resolution to participate in the ODOT project converting two stop-controlled intersections to roundabouts at I-75 lying within the city of Bowling Green.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt resolution 3701.
Second.
It's been moved in second to K. Would you please call a roll.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3701 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8678 for second reading. Ordinance adopting the city of Bowling Green job creation retention program. Ordinance number 8679 for second reading. Ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio for property generally known as 506th Street from M1 Light Industrial to R3 Multiple Family Residential. Ordinance number 8682 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to execute an agreement for the lease of conduit facilities.
I move to amend ordinance 8682 with the addition of the emergency clause.
Second.
It's moved in second to K. Would you please call a roll.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
The motion passes. The ordinance 8682 is amended to include an emergency clause. I also move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 8682 its third reading.
Second.
Moved in second to K. Would you please call a roll.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 8682.
Ordinance authorizing, this is ordinance number 8682 for third reading as amended. Ordinance authorizing utilities director to execute an agreement for the lease of conduit facilities and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt ordinance 8682.
Thank you. First, we have to approve the emergency clause.
Right.
So...
You need to adopt the emergency clause.
I move that we adopt the emergency clause for ordinance 8682.
Second.
Thank you. It's moved in second to K. Would you please call a roll.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 8682.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8682.
Second.
Moved in second to K. Would you please call a roll.
Second.
It's moved in second to K. Would you please call a roll.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for resolution 3701.
Resolution number 3701 for third reading. Resolution authorizing municipal administrator to execute the Ohio Department of Transportation's final resolution to participate in the ODOT project converting two stop-controlled intersections to roundabouts at I-75 lying within the city of Bowling Green.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt resolution 3701.
Second.
It's been moved in second to K. Would you please call a roll.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8682 is adopted. Ordinance number 8683 for second reading, ordinance amending and adopting Chapter 113 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding mobile food vendors, peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant merchants, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold.
I want to acknowledge that we had a council committee meeting as a whole that you chaired at 6 o'clock tonight, it was a very efficient meeting, and a number of loose ends and slight potential modifications were covered. And based on the feedback, there's a few amendments that will be advanced for next time. And one item that we did have discussion on was potential expansion of the appeal process, and it was directed that we have the advantage of Greg and Daniel in further discussion to determine whether or not that would be part of any amendment. And just to cover the issue briefly, the current wording for the proposed legislation allows for an appeal process if a special, if a mobile food vendor's special event permit is denied. So if it's denied, then there is an appeal process currently in the wording to have that individual come before city council. The existing legislation that covers special events, just our general special events, has wording where not only is there an appeal for that situation, but there's also an appeal if the permit is approved. In other words, if the permit's approved, then a citizen of Bowling Green has the opportunity to appeal the approval to city council. And so the issue to be resolved is, should we keep the wording as it is currently proposed so that there is an appeal if the permit is denied, but there isn't an appeal by a citizen if the permit is approved? So that's option A. Option B would be to include the wording like it is in the special event permit, so that the mobile food vendor's special event permit would have a provision so that if it is approved, any citizen could come and appeal it to city council. So thoughts, anyone?
Background is, when we discussed this in the committee as a whole, we were tied to it as to whether or not we would. So we're just looking for a little bit of feedback and a tiebreaker from Greg and Daniel so that we can determine whether or not we want to amend the legislation that we just gave a second reading to, by substitution, to include this component.
Which of course means Daniel and Greg can't...
I...
The, I'd have a question for city administrator, that is, how often has the option of appealing an allowed permit happened?
Never, to my knowledge, has a special event permit been appealed.
And my only comment was, when I saw that section, when I was looking at the existing ordinance, it seemed pretty cumbersome, 10-day period if I recall, and then it has to come to council, but council only meets every 14 or 21 days. The ordinance didn't even seem to be functional, let alone useful, and it's never been exercised. I'd opt for keeping the language the way it is.
I mean, that's my sense, I don't think we want to restrict people at the last minute if there's an issue, particularly if there's an event going on, but even if there's not.
So we have consensus, believe it is. Thank you.
It is left as is.
Correct, yep. Okay, Kate, please proceed.
Legislation for third reading, ordinance number 8674 for third reading, ordinance amending Section 50.38 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio relating to sewer lateral.
I move to adopt ordinance 8674.
Second.
It's moved in second, okay, would you please call a roll.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8674 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8675 for third reading, ordinance vacating utility easement at 521 Woodbridge Boulevard.
I move to adopt ordinance 8675.
Second.
Moved in second, okay, would you please call a roll.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
The motion is approved, ordinance 8675 is adopted. Ordinance number 8676 for third reading, ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for qualifications and bids, and enter into contract or contracts for the engineering, purchase, installation, and any associated work for 125 MDA transformer at the Dunn Bridge Road substation.
I move to adopt ordinance 8676.
Second.
It's moved in second, is there any discussion? Kate, would you please call a roll.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8676 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8677 for third reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 99.02B of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding arborists to control trees.
I move to approve ordinance 8677.
Second.
It's moved in second, is there any discussion?
Comment I think is a really good thing to do, we have an expert arborist on hand, and he will move forward in a reasonable, responsible way, I figure we help him.
Thank you, Bruce. Kate, would you please call a roll.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8677 is adopted. That completes the items on our agenda this evening. Is there a motion to excuse Councilperson Zambardino?
So moved. Second.
It's moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Motion passes, Councilman Zambardino is excused. Is there any other business to come before council?
Could I just clarify, did we schedule a meeting for the committee as a whole for the charter?
Correct, yes.
What time?
Starting time to be determined.
To be determined.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's, it's to be determined, we'll get it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because you recall, there was already, tentatively, there's a, or not tentatively, there's a 6:45.
Yes, correct. So I just think we need to get an idea of how much time we might need to discuss these issues. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Motion passes, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone, thank you.